Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, October 2nd. Joined here today by Commissioner Madeira. Commissioner Jones is not present. And we will begin with our public statement, please.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And we also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda are department updates. Ms. Kelly is joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of September 30th, COVID wastewater concentrations are trending down. The levels are currently moderate, but still a little bit higher than earlier this summer. Current COVID variants circulating include the XFB, also referred to as Stratus, and NB1.8.1, also referred to as NIMBAS. So common symptoms include headache, cough, severe throat pain, and running nose or congestion. Flu activity across the state is minimal. The CDC recommends an annual flu vaccine for all people six months and older, and our public health clinic has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No, I have none. Thank you very much for the update, and it's good to hear that COVID is trending down.
Good news. Thank you so much. All right. Now, any other departments have an update for us? Mr. Kreider?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building Fleet Manager. I'm here regarding renovations for Election Central. To date, design and development, construction documents have been completed. We're now in the bidding phase. Advertisements were sent out on Tuesday, September 9th, and Wednesday, September 17th. The original deadline to submit bids was September 25th, but there were some changes in the scope, so we granted an extra week for that. That's this morning. And we've received sealed bids from two contractors. I'm going to take these to Mr. Cockrell.
Ready with the letter opener.
This is the favorite part of my job.
We have to get you a new letter opener.
Well, I brought a different one than last time. The first one I'm going to open is from Strauser Construction Company in Bloomington, Indiana. And the base bid for construction is $506,800. There is a bid for an alternative of $146,800. Second bid is from Fox Company out of Bloomington, Indiana. Their base bid is $509,450, with the alternative being $183,700. I think we'd ask you to let us look at these, take them under advisement, and we would come back with a recommendation hopefully next week.
Great. We will take these under advisement? Yes? Agreed? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other department updates for us? Or other envelopes for Jeff to open?
Worked a lot better that time.
It did. That was good. You must have sharpened it. All right, seeing none, let's move on to public comment. This is for items not on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you provide your name and county of residence. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium here in the NatU Hill Room. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
I would like to move approval of the minutes for September 25th, 2025.
Second, any comments, corrections, edits?
I had none.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for September 25th, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 2-0, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the claims docket for accounts payable for October 2nd, 2025, and for payroll for October 3rd, 2025.
Second, Ms. Moser, please tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for October 2nd, 2025 totals $3,555,502.11. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for October 3rd, 2025 includes $1,592,454.60 in direct costs, and the remaining $682,077.34 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,274,531.94.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
I had none.
I don't have any either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable October 2nd, 2025, and payroll October 3rd, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. I will note for the record that we have received a report from Weights and Measures dated September of 2025, and we will now move on to new business, please.
I would like to move approval for the Indiana Geographic Information Office Sewing, Enriched, and Enhanced Data Sets, or SEES grant application in the amount of $29,930.
I will second that. We have Surveyor and Wright Randolph, and we have Dr. Baten joining us. Good morning.
Yes, hi. I'm just actually really up here to express my gratitude to Dr. John Baten with his initiative to pursue this grant. I came here earlier to kind of get a thumbs up to go ahead and pursue this. We were awarded the grant, and I'm just going to kind of get out of the way and let Mr. Baten talk about it a bit more.
Good morning.
Hi, Commissioners. Yeah, so this is a grant that we applied for and were awarded. It's just for under $30,000 to essentially try to enhance some of our core data sets to align with Next Gen 911 kind of recording standards at the state. In addition to that, we're going to be using this funding with Cultivate Geospatial Solutions, which is a company we've been contracting with and have a good relationship already, to kind of, I don't want to say this overhaul, but really strengthen our GIS database and make sure that things are going to be running faster and smoother and be more secure moving forward. So, yeah, we're here today to basically get the approval so we can hit accept on a button, and then we get a contract that comes out, and we'll need signatures and things like that. This has gone through legal and everything like that. The only concern that legal had raised was about a line in the template contract that said something along the lines of the county agrees that the state is not, doesn't have any lawsuits against them. There is a current one with the Sheriff's Office, but that is a caveat in the contract that they'll be producing after we hit accept. So, I'm saying with the acceptance of this, whatever. But it's a really exciting grant, and yeah, I'm really looking forward to kind of moving forward, so.
Very cool. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No, I think this is very exciting, and I'm really happy to help you hit that accept button.
Awesome, thanks.
This is great news, and it's great for the safety of our residents, obviously, so that's a win-win. I really appreciate the work on this. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Indiana Geographic Information Office Sewing, Enriched, and Enhanced Data Sets grant application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next item, please.
I would like to move to approve the Convention Center Management Agreement. Fund name Monroe County Convention Center Operations, fund number 4005, in the amount of $531,300 for the first year.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, our current agreement expires at the end of the year, and with the operations of the Convention Center, they need to make sure they have contracts in place for things such as catering, audiovisual, and things like that. So, we like to get this approved well before the end of the year. We've actually probably been working on this contract for six months, trying to figure out how to accommodate the transition that we see coming with the CIB and the completion of the expanded project and things like that. I think at the end of the day, we kind of, we've kind of came to the conclusion that those conversations really need to be happening between the CIB and the CBC and those groups. So, we tried to keep the contract much the same as what it has been historically. We did make some changes to clean up some of the confusions that we think will help the future conversations between those two groups, the funding being the particular area that I think we probably hit the most because I've been looking at this contract for 15 years, and I still didn't understand it as completely as I should have or needed to. So, we kind of tried to make it a little bit clearer that how the money flows from their operations, that goes into an account held by the Convention Center Management Company who pays the, you know, day-to-day expenses. And then, after those are paid, it goes into the county fund, which is then used to pay the Convention Center Management Company their management fee. So, these are, all the revenues we're talking about with this contract originate from the use of the Convention Center. Any innkeeper's tax or anything like that is dealt with a separate agreement with the Convention and Visitors Commission. So, we kind of wanted to include language in there that said that it's paid from these funds or through that contract, and the CBC is the party of that contract. So, we just wanted to make it clear that this wasn't the sole funding sources for a lot of those things. Other than that, I think the expiration date is three months after the expanded center is open and operating, or five years, whichever is sooner, because we wanted to make sure that there wasn't a gap anywhere in between if something were to happen. So, our hope is that that three-month window really gives, and the remaining of the construction really gives the time for those conversations that happen between the CIB and the CBC. And the CIB is Capital Improvement Board, CBC is Convention and Visitors Commission. Sometimes I talk in acronyms like everybody in the world knows, and I should know better.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm very thankful for your clear explanation of that complicated arrangement. It's almost like a verbal flow chart, so thank you.
I don't have any questions. I don't know if Ms. Kopic wants to speak at all. Sure. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for 35 years of, you know, with the Convention Center, and, you know, there's been over 14,000 events, over 2.5 million people that have come through the doors. The art funding was invaluable, and I think we're down to the wire on that. There's $10,000 left, so we anticipate wrapping that up pretty soon also. The, you know, local meetings, celebrations, not-for-profit fundraisers, visitor conferences, conventions. Just this week, for example, we've had Aflac with a team meeting, Sycamore Land Trust is this Saturday with their fundraiser, Cook Medical's there today, Indiana Hospital Association was there yesterday and today talking about trauma in the hospital arena. So, it's just been really rewarding and, you know, economically valuable for the community as well. And, you know, thank Jeff for the tediousness of this agreement, but, you know, as we're getting ready for that next phase, I think this will be helpful transition. And we're looking forward to the new building being open February 27, and it's moving along quite quickly. We have a communications listserv that if anybody's interested in being on that, they could contact us at info@bloomingtonconvention.com, and we can get them added for construction updates. But thank you. I really enjoyed working with all of you over the years. Really, really. Thank you.
We like working with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been an amazing steward of the property and a great face for conventions in our area, so thank you for all your hard work. And I know that construction brings new headaches as much as it brings new promise, but I'm, you know, I'm sure things will go well. We've got a good CIB, so that helps. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Convention Center Management Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
I would like to move approval for Resolution 2025-38B regarding approving the issuance of a general obligation bond in an amount up to $6 million.
I will second that. Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah, and this is essentially a resolution that is very, very similar to the one you passed a few weeks ago when we had a conversation with the county council. And as they worked through their budget process, some things were added to that, and they're in the, the only thing that changed is Exhibit A, and it's the project list. They added things such as clarifying that a street sweeper and highway vehicles, which I think would have been included in the general term vehicles, but just clarifying that, and a couple other small ones. I will say, since I put this on the agenda, working with the bond council and the commissioner staff, we also would like to add justice building remodel and repair and courthouse to this list as well. I think I gave you a version of it with those bolded as additions, so I think when this gets approved, we'd ask that you add those in as well.
Doesn't affect any of the projects currently in the bond?
Right. That, I think that's a good point. So, justice building remodel and repair refers to the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Center. Courthouse refers to the historic courthouse, just to clarify that for the public. Right, and we have not lost any items from the list, which is wonderful. Okay, great. Any comments or questions?
No, I think this is just a technical clarification, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, this is a new resolution rather than revising an existing resolution, correct? That's why it's a B?
Yes, it's a new one. I just wanted to make clear, because when the bonds get marketed and sold, they will ask for this resolution, and I wanted it to be a clean resolution.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on the site. You raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor approving Resolution 2025-38B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Thank you. And we'll go to the next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the VET Environmental Engineering LLC dehumidifier installation and long-term stewardship plan for the Justice Building. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in the amount of $44,067.65.
I will second that. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, this is as a result of the mold response and remediation process that occurred at the Justice Building in, I believe, August, September. And there's actually two parts to this, so this is the first part, because this is just, these are both flat fees. Based upon the information that was gathered during the August, September issues, primarily the issue was elevated relative humidity. I'm going to kind of read this from VET as being the primary cause of much of the identified biological growth. And elevated relative humidity is reportedly attributable to a poorly functioning or improperly calibrated HVAC system, and that was what we found, is that the HVAC system, someone who shouldn't have changed the calibration, caused all kinds of problems. That coupled with just the inefficiency of the building design, aging infrastructure has all added to the elevated humidity that's within that particular building. So, as a result of that, they are proposing the installation of dehumidifiers, and those were going to go into three stairwells. And it anticipated that those will be on the third floor, and three dehumidifiers on the third floor and three on the fifth floor, and then their condensate drain will be plumbed into existing drain waste lines. And their proposal also includes the necessary electrical connections. They're also proposing a long-term stewardship plan, which is going to help us, not only now, but in the future, to ensure that our buildings and that we and staff are able to respond appropriately to water intrusions, because it's mold and water are the two things that are the problem. And we have problems with this building in that some of the windows on one of the sides of the building, they leak, and that causes problems within the, as it comes into the building and the floors. And so, she's proposing, they're proposing kind of an oversight via living document that will help us and everyone to understand the building systems, the operations, and the ongoing challenges that we have. And she's identified, you know, that one of the things that we'll need to do is ensure that the windows are assessed on a regular basis to ensure water intrusion has not occurred. But that is, it'd be more coming from that particular plan as it becomes fully put together. And as I said, it's a long, it's a living document. It will change and evolve as we learn and as we go. So, that's the first part of this.
Comments or questions?
No, this sounds like it's really going to help. I just am mindful that there's a number of community members who think that this building is salvageable. And it just, it just kills me to dump taxpayer money into this building because it's just a sunk cost, but it is necessary because we have staff and we have individuals in that building, and it's necessary. It's vital that we maintain that building until we have an alternative, and it's vital we have an alternative. So, until that is here, we have to have these costs. But, but yes, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, and I think she had mentioned something about a mold-resistant paint that needs to go in stairwells, but that's something that Mr. Gardner and others can do.
I think that's actually part of the second group, or the second item we have on here.
Ah, that's, okay.
She doesn't necessarily identify the paint per se, but there's a cleaner that is going to be used as part of this whole ongoing pack.
I got it now. All right. And I just want to note as well that part of this issue, obviously, it's, you know, building design, building age, but part of this issue has to do with climate change as well. This is a resiliency issue because we experienced the highest humidity levels in decades, in decades, in Monroe County this past summer. So, that's, you know, and that's not going to go away. So, that's, that's an issue. So, this is a one-time expense, and makes total sense. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the VET Environmental Engineering LLC dehumidifier installation, long-term stewardship plan for the Justice Building signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Next item, please.
I would like to move approval for the VET Environmental Engineering LLC Consulting Services. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount not to exceed $134,986.68 per year.
Second, Ms. Purdy?
So, this is the second part of this proposed contract for you guys, and that is there'll be ongoing mold inspection, and that, I want to also take from the report what it says, or the proposal, they're going to perform regular inspections of areas that were not included in the initial sampling events at the building, and it will also include areas that had exhibited particularly problematic conditions prior to the remediation. So, it's going to expand its approach of the building and then also focus on those areas that had had definite problems before. And they're going to do air samples within these spaces, and they're also going to do the tape lift surface samples of, within the facility. And then what they're going to do is they will, once they get those results, they're going to do an actual targeted remediation of those spaces, and they're going to ensure that there's confirmatory sampling, both, you know, obviously before and after that remediation has occurred. And so, that is going to be going on, if you're in agreement, for each month. We have a not to exceed per month, which is what's listed in the, in the agenda, and the three different actions being the ongoing mold inspection, targeted remediation, and confirmatory sampling, those all have a not to exceed number per month, but they total, if it was to max out at that level each month, for $134,986.68.
Thank you.
And on this one, I would ask that you would include in your motion language that says that we are going to add our kind of boilerplate language for insurance, reporting, harassment, that we use on our standard contracts to this. We've used this vendor-
Because this is ongoing.
Yeah, it's ongoing, and it involves them in the building more and things like that, and it's not just installation of equipment. So, I would ask that you add that to it. We've worked with this vendor before. They've seen that language before, so I'm not really worried about any concerns on their end. I just think it needs to be part of this agreement.
So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we amend the contract to include the boilerplate language as Mr. Cockrell has outlined regarding discrimination in insurance and other key items that we always include.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have motion to second any public comment on the revise or on the amendment to the motion. Seeing none, I'm going to call the role on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The amendment carries 2-0, and now we'll go back to the heart of the matter and see if you have comments or questions.
I do not. Again, critical, critical infrastructural expense, so.
My question is if, I would assume that, two things. So, for the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Building, I would assume that- So for the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Building, I would assume that if an employee has a specific concern or question, that that would then be funneled to VET by Mr. Gardner and his group.
They should go through a kind of a chain of command.
Got it.
And not reach directly to--
Okay, got it. Right. The other question is what we're doing for other buildings, given the environment, given, you know, the situation in various buildings that we've seen, that we've dealt with. Are we going to see a contract for those other buildings?
Most, it's possible. Again, we're kind of reactive at this point in time. I think the Health Building would be the next one on our list because we know there has been an issue of mold in that particular building. We have not had identified issues of mold in other buildings. People are not, you know, expressing what brought all this to our attention in the first place. So we kind of need to get to take care of the problems that we do know that we have, right? And then after that, we will, I think, just as a prophylaxis, if you will, we will make sure that each building is in fact tested just as an ongoing basis. But we don't, that is not part of this particular contract. That will be forthcoming.
Right, that's what I wanted. And I mean, and I think, you know, we could probably get away with quarterly in most buildings, you know, but, but it's something I'd like us to do.
Oh, definitely. I've already spoken with VET about that.
Perfect.
I figured that that was--
Yeah.
--where you guys would go.
Yeah.
But just trying to eat this elephant one bite at a time.
Sure, sure, sure. No, 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 for sure. Yeah, this is sort of the next step. I'm kind of over there, and we're here. Got it, thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, which is quite a bit. And it's, you know, climate change isn't going away, so we were going to have to continue to keep our eyes on this as mold becomes more prevalent in the atmosphere around us in the summer months especially. All right. Anything else?
No, I just even noticed that mold numbers are higher this week, actually, because of the higher temperatures, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's lots of fun. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the amended motion for VET Environmental Engineering LLC Consulting Services for the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Building. I'm just going to add that in there. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 2-0. Okay?
Thank you.
Good, good. Thank you. All right. We don't have any appointments today. Just to note that the Rural Housing Repair Program through ARPA is now being managed by the Bloomington Foundation. Contact your township trustee to assist you with the application process. Reminder, this is for homeowners who occupy their homes outside the city of Bloomington. Just a reminder to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System. Weather and health updates will be provided for you. When you sign up, you can receive texts, emails, and/or phone calls. Belt suspenders and another belt. We are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to our new website, ian.gov/county/monroe, and take a look. Again, a note that we have not yet updated. This is, you know, it's part of the process of migrating data. The board and commission lists are not yet updated. So if you're interested in something, apply. You never know. We do hold virtual office hours six times each month. Go to the calendar on our homepage, ian.gov/county/monroe, and check out the dates and times, and join us via Teams for an interesting conversation. The next blood drives are Thursday, October 9th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, October 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. These are at IV Tech. Thanks, IV Tech, for helping us with this. In room C130ANB. Please make an appointment at redcross.org. We always need blood and blood products in our community. Anything else for the good of the order?
Uh, no.
All right. We do have a work session item, so I have to see what. 10:38. Can we come back at 10:50, 5:0 for the work session item? Is that okay? Good? Okay, excellent. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, October 9th, right here in the NatU Hill Room in your favorite Teams channel. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, Katz. Thanks, TSD.